We have six minutes.
I know, but still, it's a short sentence. No 11:30.
Can I just open your sentence? That does not look like today's fact.
Yeah, no.
No, I just had too many of them open. Six of them open.
Now it's better.
So you were tied up yesterday.
Mary's mom was 99, 110. I hope September's not good. About 10 days ago she fell.
Oh, no.
Broke the fracture left her belt here and sprained her wrist on this side. And she was walking around with a claw in her hand. She was in the hospital for five days and then now they have her in rehab center.
Oh, yeah.
Which hit her where she was.
She's loving that.
Yeah, because she was in that, and it's looking so good for her. So anyway, the daughters are all cooking turns, staying with her and Mary. This is her turn, but also tied into that if her son is down in Canada with her grandson, who's six years old, he was pegged over to go to conversation, but he forthwalked. So that left six-year-old Felix.
And you're right. That's a legitimate excuse, you're okay.
Grandpa was busy.
So we walked, then let him have his car, we walked from our house to McDonald's.
Oh, yeah.
Two hours.
Wear a mouth. No.
Well, you have.
I actually just sat there, keep on my phone, it's amazing how much work you do in your home.
It is. Drafting software. Communications is such great.
Didn't you have it, you have it next to mine?
There were like...
Joey Starkey is...
I can't, I can't, I have a part next to you.
Construction house.
I just want to... We're probably being late in front of August.
But you get a form for a renovation.
Okay, you did foundation here.
Yeah, I did the foundation design. The existing house.
Yeah. They're making the tour.
It looks like this. And this, this is the house they added this addition. And then there's another house over here, storage building. At least they're three feet from the pocket lot.
Oh, my.
And the rule is ten.
Oh, depending on your zone, yeah.
So, so this slab, if we can use these existing walls, if we don't take the wall back...
You can, you can prolong it, yes.
So this is coming in like this, coming in like this, coming in like this.
The new wall has to be 10 feet, yeah.
The new wall has to be 10 feet, but as long as we don't tear down these walls, and this is repaired, we answer without more, we're going to demolish everything but that wall and pour the concrete slab, and that meets the intention.
How much lot is this?
It used to be a red brick, it's between us and Mason.
Okay.
A vacant property. I know you did all the survey.
Okay. Someone have looked at it.
Yeah.
So Lisa's here. Lisa's here.
This is there, it was that house there.
And that's three feet off the lot, and that's the storage building, and you're going to come back in and add to this on the side?
Yeah.
Well, we didn't, it's very rough.
That's where it's been.
I thought you might.
I stand...
Ready?
Very far away.
You only had a few...
Oh, Chris. He's California?
Yeah.
How'd you guess?
We walked the dog at the park, he was almost naked before he was...
So, how's your mission that could...
Well, he, he was the engineer that works for Christopher, so...
And he was going to renovate it with that app to us. Was he or is it a re-reinforcement?
No.
I thought he was, no, or somebody else?
Well, well, they were making a decision regarding the one that overlooks the duck pond.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Well, they were talking about... Yeah, well, because they were talking about having to move it because of the fence.
If we take out the...
The pond.
Take out the pond, you believe me?
Yeah.
It'll become a bird watching...
Yeah, exactly.
Seven ducks.
All right.
I want to be a minister, so I come immediately, short.
Yes, thank you. On this one, just...
I'll walk here.
The recommendation should be what the recommendation motion would be.
Now, his daughter took a picture of him.
This was me after my walk today.
Sweaty day.
So, the recommendation? And I don't know if it's a, but on, on all of these, the recommendation is what the...
We were actually, yes, Dr. Burgess.
Thanks.
Chris's daughter, a Penn State truck backed up to the canal, next to Brederich's probably.
Okay, yes.
And we had the height to... Hers, I don't know, I didn't know she was working in. No, Christopher just, she's, I guess she's in...
All right, all ready?
All right.
All right, we're going to call this meeting to order at 5:30. We'll start with a roll call.
Sheena Martinez, District One.
Paul Carey for District Two.
Bill King, District Three.
David Mers, District Four.
Herb Dyer, District Five.
And Darren Schroeder, Mayor. All over here. Please stand with us for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
First to the American flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
And for the invocation, we have Pastor David Simonson of Castroville Community Church. Thank you, sir.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today with a great town of Castroville. We ask your guidance as our elected leaders in decisions that will affect the lives of all who live here. Pray that you will give them wisdom and compassion as we all work to make this town a better place for everyone. We pray for our citizens, that we be safe, prosperous, and pray for our community, that it will be a place of peace and unity. And I ask you to descend to more reins and ask all these things in the name of your Son, my Savior, Jesus Christ. Thank you.
All right, next item, we have citizens' comments.
Kyle McVay, 307 Madrid, Castroville. Again, thank you for your efforts in trying to get our animal shelter. I appreciate you at least considering it, but please, let's get it going. As I told the mayor recently, that three of the people that were originally involved with it with me have all passed away. And I go, okay, I would like to see the shelter before I do that. So, please, let's don't put it off indefinitely. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. All right, would anybody else like to speak for citizens' comments? Is she going to do it?
Go ahead, Diane, do you have anything you want to say? Samantha Murray, 148 Village Path. I just wanted to make a comment on the length of the city council meetings. The last two have gone a little bit past 11:00 PM, and I'd like to suggest that council consider maybe putting an end time for the meetings. Obviously, I have personal reasons for wanting that, with David on council, one little one and one on the way, it's just more convenient to have him home earlier. But beyond the personal convenience, I do think it's a matter of good governance. I know that the council wants to encourage citizen participation in the meetings, and one way to do that is to make sure that they're held during reasonable times for the citizens to attend, from start all the way to finish. The start time of 5:30 is awesome, gives people time to get over here, but it's hard to expect them to them stay until 11:00 PM for the end. And this could be handled various ways, reconvening the next day, maybe putting time limits on like agenda items, or even scheduling again just an end time, like by this time we're done. But I do trust council to look at that, discuss the issue, and see what might work best for council and the community. So thank you, guys, for your valuable time.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Well said. All right, next item is consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have minutes for June 27th, 2023, regular called city council meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion.
I second.
Great, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes. Next item is city administrators' report. Scott?
You know what? I've been so busy, I don't even refresh myself on the things I wrote, but, so I don't have it in front of me. Thank you. As always, I'll entertain any questions once we go through these, as far as a couple of things, the IT needs analysis originally, we targeted June, I wanted to have that done by the end of June. Part of that was for budget purposes, to make sure that we had an opportunity to get the RFP out the door and get an idea of what the cost might be. Unfortunately, there was some miscommunication and other issues that rose between our consultant and HTS. HTS has been a good partner through all of this, but there were some issues that took some time to resolve. So those have been resolved, I did follow up with them today, just prior to the meeting, and we are still targeting having a completed report and RFP by the end of August. In full disclosure, they were supposed to have gotten internally, they were supposed to have gotten the findings of their scan and some other things to one of their, so it's a team working together, one of the other team members, so he could work on the final report, and he did inform me today, he has not received that yet. So he's a little concerned that he's not going to have enough time, but I'll light a fire and try to get that done. The City Hall remodel update, that's still, that's in full swing, we are, we don't see a lot of activity, but the engineering and review work on the existing structure is ongoing. I think I have a meeting this Friday with that team to get an update from them. One of the things that I've asked them is to look at the space utilization plan for the building. You know, from a construction standpoint, there won't be a major change, I think we went with Plan B, which was the extension to the back parking lot with restrooms in that portion of the building, the stairs and elevator in that portion of the building that allow the walls that are within this building that can be moved, it would allow us to move those walls and reconfigure the space. But at the end of the day, the envelope is the envelope, we're not going to be able to change it a whole lot. But I would like to nail that down and make sure that I have your blessing as council on that plan, whatever that plan is, so we can get that box checked. And it also gives us the opportunity to brag about what we're, what we plan to do at City Hall. I'd love to have like some illustrations posted and be able to let the community know what we're planning. Just as a reminder, that's being paid for out of the interest income that we're earning on our excess revenues that are sitting in the bank. So that's, I still anticipate that that to be the case until interest rates go down, which I know we all would like them to do. Right now, we're taking advantage of the fact that they are higher, so...
We're not putting an animal shelter in here?
What's, no, not even, no, that'll be something you can discuss later, but probably not at this location.
Did we get the, are we a historic building or not yet answer?
That's one of the things I'm going to try to address with them on Friday. I know they've been following up with, the architect's been following up with Texas Historic Commission to try and get, he did get a letter, but we questioned the validity of that letter, even though it came from THC, and so he's gone back then to address that issue, so hopefully I'll get an update on Friday.
Scott, when you all get into the engineering design for that, you're going to need someone to do some quality technical study? And I'll help you with that.
Oh, okay. I'll make the word that. Okay. Yeah, yeah. When we put together a proposal which council approves, I need to go back and look and see what he figured in for DUOTech and make sure they're aware of that. I'm not positive that hasn't already been done, but I don't believe so, because I don't, there's, one of the things they'll do is dig a test pit in the back to look at the foundation. Yeah.
It's not a scheduled item, we need to add it, I think.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's definitely, I'm fairly certain it's on the schedule. The downtown master plan, there's no real change. This is something that's also budgeted for in your CIP, but given our limited resources in terms of staff, I thought it prudent to wait to start that project until after we have the UDO going. And so that's kind of what we're doing there. We have had a lot of interest from various firms, planning firms, engineers, et cetera. So I think once we put that out, similarly, we have the same level of interest in the UDO. So, once we put that out, I think we'll get some interest. The UDO, that's due later this month, July 17th, so we should see that on the council's agenda, I believe on the 8th of August for award. Let's see. Balanced scorecard, the mayor and I, mostly the mayor and I at this stage, after all of those meetings we had with staff, et cetera, we've been working with your biz rules to try and get the framework established for the scorecard. I'm very pleased with kind of where we're at on that process. I'll feel a lot better once we get the skeletons and bones, and that's, it's a lot of work, as I know, you know, Sheena, but that's, that's the effort we're in right now, which is writing those kind of overarching objectives, and then we're going to seek validation with you all, with the organization, et cetera, but that's what, that's the effort we're in right now. Your biz rules has been fantastic to work with, as far as interpreting kind of what we're saying into, into what needs to happen, so that's been good. The thoroughfare planning, I mentioned this before, there's a map that's included in my report, and this is a considerable concern to me. I know the mayor has reached out to Clayton Rips and had a conversation with him about this map, but I'm just, I'm very concerned that it even exists and that, that we weren't aware that it existed despite having had multiple meetings with Tech dot. That seems to me have been, someone dropped the ball somewhere. Yes?
You mentioned there's a map, but I didn't see it.
Should be in your...
It's the last page of his... Of tab seven?
Yes.
Yeah.
Should look like this.
Keep going. It's not in his.
How dare you.
I thought you sent it out.
I can bring it up.
Can you send?
Well, it doesn't say.
It's in the print, it's in the print copy, and...
I didn't get it either.
I can bring it up on the screen if people really want to talk about it.
Let's, let's just... Let's send out the electronic version to council, just sort of thing. I thought we'd send it to them.
I might have, I don't remember.
Does anybody remember saying that? Okay, let's send it over.
So the concern obviously is that on this map, you can see the color coding on the upper right, and the section, you'll see that the section of the, the future roadway plan between Castroville and Honda is green, that's a 300-foot section. The section to the east of Castroville, all the way up to the edge of Castroville, is yellow or kind of an orange is yellow, that is a 400-foot section. And the little stars that you see on either end of Castroville are grade separated crosses.
Where the green is 400?
I don't know, but that's the only, that's the only conclusion I can draw from this map, is that they're planning to build a bridge overnight over Castroville. And again, this is a pretty major element to exist and do its existence since 2018, when we had, we've had multiple meetings with a whole cadre of Tech dot folks not to be informed of its existence. So I'm concerned about the fact that it exists, I'm concerned about what it means for our thoroughfare planning at the county level. The county's been made aware of it, and we will, as staff and as the mayor and working with the county, we'll do our best to convey our concern to, to, to Tech dot. But I want to make you aware of it, just found out about it recently. One of the things that this is going, that we're going to need direction from council on, so this will be on a future dinner, probably August 8th, is I'll need to know whether the city is supportive of this plan that Tech dot has put together. Because if it is, there are already right-of-way dedication requests that are being, that have been sent to the various developers along 90. So there, Tech dot's already asking them to dedicate the additional right-of-way that would be needed to accommodate this interstate. And if, if we support that, then we need to make them aware of that. If we don't support them, that, then they will ask for a letter from us that states that, so that they can then turn that into Tech dot and say, hey, the city's not supportive of, of your future growth plans, and we don't want to dedicate this right-of-way. And this is particularly important to, if you think about the dealership that just acquired property for future expansion and its existing location, when you talk about giving up an additional 100 feet of right-of-way further into the, that really starts to impact their footprint, what we're trying to do. The same thing is true of Enduro. When you look at the Enduro developments, the 50-acre developments, fairly small in size, when you give up another 100 feet in, inside of that development, that really starts to limit what they're, what they're going to do there. So, not to mention just, I mean, that's a developer level concern, I would think from a community level concern, obviously, we've been very concerned about walkability and just the scar that is 90 that goes through, through Castroville. You put 400 feet of interstate, there is no, there is no crossing on a firm pedestrian law. I mean, that's, that's, that's huge.
Well, and to carry that on, if it's 400 feet through town, you can see, yeah, they're pulling it up on their map right now, so you can see what 100 feet on...
Sammy's Restaurant.
That would be gone, right?
Well, right here at Constantinople, the little jetty thing in front of the...
That would be gone.
That, that would be gone.
Zooks is gone.
Yeah, Lee Market's gone.
So, as I talked to...
Hardware store.
Yeah. So if you look at extending the right-of-way 100 feet on either side, that's a third of a block. When I talked to Clayton Rips, he said, this is not what we're trying to accomplish. And Scott's point was, it's on the map. If you're not trying to accomplish it, it shouldn't be on the map.
Well, they're asking for the right-of-way.
And they're asking for the right-of-way.
So if they're trying to accomplish it, why are they asking for the right-of-way from our developers?
Right.
If they're asking for the right-of-way...
Understand they're going to put bridges over it?
That is the only way, I don't see any way that they could overcome the massive community...
It'll be just like downtown Austin.
Right. And is that what we want for our historic count? I think that if they concentrate their efforts with, in coordination with the county, and even with Barrick County, on creating additional routes as a part of the US 90 study to go around Castroville, I think that is our best...
I'm just, I want to pull this up so I can show it to you.
And that's a historic landmark? Oh, there goes the walking bridge.
So, that, this is what we were just looking at, there is your key, the upper right-hand corner, you can see, it's 400 feet for the green, right? And 250 feet, I said 300, it's 250 feet for the orange. And when you look at Castroville and the area of Castroville, you'll see that it is green.
Go to the right, that's Honda.
That's Honda.
I'm sorry.
Go to the right, there you go. There's Castroville.
All green all the way through town.
Yeah.
And I was wrong, I was saying it's orange between us, but it's actually orange...
Yeah, west of Honda.
Yeah.
As it approaches Honda and west of Honda, which makes no sense to me, but anyway. So it should be a cause of concern, it was a cause for alarm, I heard, I hear what you're saying, mayor, your conversation with Clayton, but that needs to be, like, it's, it's on a map.
It's on a map.
By the way, the landmark inn is gone if they do that.
They cannot, they cannot take, they cannot take Park, September Square, or the Landmark Inn, so that's going to narrow it.
Or Broadway.
And it doesn't do any...
Do what? Broadway Bank?
No, that's not, it's not historic structures, it's parkland, there's a federal law that you can't approach on parkland to build a highway. If you do, there's no federal money.
Not to mention cemeteries.
And cemetery's at the other end of town, so they're going to have a problem with the cemetery block in our route from the west, and those two buildings in the east, and it makes no sense to fuggle everything down and then open it up again from town.
Well, and I...
So someone's not telling us the whole story.
Well, honestly, I may have also portrayed this incorrectly, because you look at, this is where 471 comes in, that's a grade separated, it's not at the river, and the other one is at 1343. So those would be bridges and whatever.
To come in, to come in with a double, two-lane divided highway to Castroville and then try to get back out, that's...
It definitely looks like someone put a grease pencil to this.
Yeah, they can do it.
All right.
We need more information. So this is something to be definitely aware of, I would say concerned with, and we need to continue to find, work with the county. I mean, honestly, most of this we can do is with county or Tech dot.
This kind of goes back in with that super, that super lanes that they were talking about, I could see them finding that there, but, but it's still headed next down through Castroville.
If they're planning on going to a 400-foot right-of-way like they're showing right here, that is going to, that'll be a bridge over Castroville.
And the challenge is, if the, if the, if the city in the future says, we don't approve, we don't like this, we don't approve of this, and we'll, we'll write a letter, and y'all will take a, you know, adopt a resolution saying we don't support it, then in the future, if Tech dot says, well, thank you, city, but we're going to do it anyway, the, the issue, the liability is that then you are going to be responsible for acquiring that additional right-of-way. And you will be responsible as a city for moving any utilities that fall within this area that Tech dot needs. That's the way that will, that will play out, and that's why there is some risk involved in kind of challenging Tech dot on these, on these issues, but this is one that I think is a pretty big concern.
I think we need a better, I need to tell us what they're really planning.
Sure.
Because if, if that's a bridge, if the stars represent a bridge, I just picture Wichita Falls, because that's what they did to Wichita Falls.
These, these represent grade separated crossings, so it may not be a bridge that goes, they may just be localized grade separated crossings at those...
That's the way that he explained it, but the fact is that 400 feet is still on the map.
Oh, yeah.
And we either need to get that changed, or, in talking to Tech dot, they're like, that's fine, we'll change it, we've got to have an alternate rep. And talking to the county, they're like, well, we don't necessarily want to do the alternate route to this size, and Tech dot's saying we need it. And so we have, we have a disparity between what the city wants, what the county wants, honestly, what Honda wants, and what Tech dot wants. Castroville and Honda want pretty much the same thing, and that is bypass around, let people that want to go through, go through. Tech dot is supportive, but they're not going to mandate it, and the county right now has not come up with a plan to make that happen. They have a couple of, couple of loops that are put on there that they're working on, so they're, they've begun the process, which is good. We just need to make sure that we stay coordinating with them, make sure that they understand the importance of doing this for the city. So I would highly recommend reaching out to your, to your county representatives and letting them know how important this is.
In the thoroughfare planning at the county level, is there any discussion of transportation options other than more lanes?
Right now, what the, what I've seen from the county, they've engaged Westwood Partners as their countywide thoroughfare planning, and all they're looking at is road, road mods.
Because there is, I mean, there's, there is a rail line that they're double tracking that goes through Lacoste and then all the way out to Honda. In a couple of years, when that's finished, that could conceivably take a lot of the Honda traffic off of Castroville. That'll be your southern route, potentially.
They're double tracking it.
So right now, it's a single track, so if there's a freight train anywhere on the section, you can't go through, but they're double tracking it, so you'd be able to have trains going east and trains going west at the same time.
I would say this, though, that they are loathe to add commuter, it takes an INTRAC and a real effort with the INTRAC hand and, you know, hand in glove to make that happen, because UP and Southern Pacific and the other, they, they are all about freight and moving freight. Moving people is, that's, there's a reason INTRAC does it, because it's subsidized, it doesn't, it doesn't make any money, so...
There is an INTRAC training, I think, goes along that track, though. I know the Sunset Limited goes from California to...
I know the Sunset Limited goes from California to.
Like twice a week.
Yeah.
Gosh, four times more than a plane.
Actually, no.
Every time I've looked at it, it's four weeks.
No, my daughter's taken multiple flights. It's cheaper than a bus.
Nice.
All right, and cheaper than a plane.
Okay.
To go to Houston, from here to Houston. So that was the thoroughfare planning. Salary study is underway. The intent of that, again, is to be timed with our budget to, to better prepare us. I mentioned this in the report, we've had, I think, six total changes in staff over the last just two, two and a half months or so, for various reasons, but the majority of them were pay-related. And so, and they're generally at the entry-level position, which is good. That's, you know, looking for good feedback and litmus testing, that, that's good feedback. It means that I think that we're in a good place for the majority of our pay, but at entry level, we're still pretty low. And so that's something that I expect to see when we get the salary survey, but we'll, we'll see what that reveals. Transportation Alternatives Grant, the only thing I'll say about that is that it's looking very good, that we will get at the minimum the planning grant, but, but that that bridge project that we looked at could become a reality. So we will keep our key fingers crossed until October, when they announce what will happen there. The mayor and I will be working with Quiddity to ensure that we are at the appropriate commission meetings. There will be several times when we, when we will either ourselves or recruit people from the community to go to Austin and be in those board meetings and speak on behalf of this grant specifically. And that's another thing that EMC helps us with. So we'll be coordinating with them to make sure those things happen. And then I mentioned a little bit of bragging in the report. What that's about is just our staff. I think especially, and for those of you who were able to participate in the balanced scorecard, you were able to see this firsthand, our, I've been very, very impressed with our staff, just their level of thoughtfulness. They are rising to the occasion is what, what I think I can say. They've been tasked with a lot of different things, they've had a lot put on their plates, and I just, I can't be more proud of how they've responded. I think they've been absolutely fantastic. So you've got a good group of employees and I'm grateful for them.
They seem to enjoy the project. They did, they enjoyed themselves.
Yeah, I think it's, for many of them, this is kind of the first time they've really been asked to think down, to think in those directions. And I'm anxious to see how the balanced scorecard gets applied. And like I said, I think one of the commitments I've made is, if we're going to do this thing, we're going to make sure that it, that it benefits the organization, that we do it in a way that is meaningful and real and of real benefit, not just to you all, but to the actual organization and carrying out what we're trying to do.
Yeah, I think this takes them to a new level of sophistication that they haven't really experienced yet. And to your point, they have absolutely risen to that. I was so impressed with just the care and attention and the effort and some of the comedic inserts. Yeah, that was really good. Thank you.
That's all I have to, I think, is there any questions about the report?
Yes, sir.
So regarding the financial health.
Oh, yeah.
For the city, I know on CIP, we're going to be looking at slowing down stuff. Is it going to affect any projects that we already have with the bonds or are those all locked in?
No, so we've got, we haven't overcommitted. We've been careful on that front.
Okay.
Now, I was anticipating issuing some more debt, so we are going to put the brakes on some of the projects that we had in the wings, because until I know whether or not we're going to fund those and how we're going to fund them, I don't want to incur any additional expense or make any commitments on behalf of the city. So the ones that are funded, that are in the CIP as funded, those are funded. They will be carried out as planned. The ones that are unfunded will remain unfunded, and that's what the 2024 cycle will be about this fall. Keep in mind, the CIP, you're on a fiscal year for your budget, that's October to Sept- or, yeah, October to September, October 1st to September 13th. Your CIP is on a calendar year, which is why we kind of separate them out and we have the discussion about the CIP in the fall, because we're going to renew that in January. You'll have a new CIP, it'll be very similar to the old one, but, but we'll look at 24. So between now and August, September timeframe, when we're adopting a budget, I'll be working with our financial advisor to look at, what is the city's ability to issue debt? My immediate response right now, without having better information, is that we more than likely will not issue additional debt in the general fund or the utility fund this year in 2023. And we may not issue it in all of '24, we'll see. And what we will more than likely do is leverage the interest and sinking portion of the property tax rate to take on a portion of the utility fund debt, until the utility fund is at a point where it can begin issuing debt again. And what, what's required to make that happen, what will, you know, the teeter that will totter is going to be the growth in the city. And so, you know, anybody looking out their window, when you start to see the actual houses going up in real numbers, that'll be when we, we'll be at the point where we can start to issue additional debt. But until then, we're probably going to be in the lull. And that's kind of what this was about. Yes, sir.
When do you intend to do another utility rate study?
I, I have, that's part of what I'm working on right now. So I'm not going through the full rate study, but I've asked, oh gosh, our partner, Schneider, thank you, your husband worked for Schneider. What I've asked Schneider Engineering and the two folks, Ramon and Ramsey, who did that for us, is to go back, we've given them, so they gave us a forecast, like a five or six-year forecast as part of that effort. We went in and put in actual numbers next to what they had forecasted, and we've asked them to now just refresh that, take another look at it, see how we've changed, and now what would your rate recommendation be? One of the things I, I believe will be an outcome of that, especially since in the, from the time that we adopted those rates to now, we've had some significant fluctuations in both our gas cost and what that, that's looking like that's going to do, not from a fuel price, but from an O and M price, from CPS's contract for operations and maintenance. That's gone up by 160%, or that's what we're kind of looking at. And then the electric cost, what we're finally going to get to, which we haven't got to yet, when we finally settle things with CPS and we see where our rates are with LCRA, that'll give us a really good idea of what our electric cost is. But regardless, it's higher than what we anticipated in the rate study. So those are two, one of, those are two outcomes I would expect, is they're going to try, they'll probably recommend some kind of a rate change with respect to electric and gas.
So citizens, citizens should be aware that there's going to be a review of rates because we're upside down in at least two of them. And the water rates are probably going to go up due to the accuracy of the meters, the new meters.
The rate won't change, but the amount.
The amount of water consumed will go up. So everybody needs to be aware that utility rates are going to be going up.
Well, again, we'll have that discussion in August, we'll be, I, I don't want people to yell chicken little yak, because we don't know what the impact is or what, what the magnitude of the changes are. But certainly what you've just stated, I think, is a fair warning to give to people that these are some real issues the city's struggling with, and we'll see how we come out of it. The gas rate, for instance, there, there is a chance that you may say, you know, we don't really need to change the rate. We're just not going to make as much revenue in that department. And that, that may be something you choose to do. So, but it's a good warning to, to share with people. So that's what that's about. Did that answer your question, Sharon?
Yeah, how are we doing with like the streets? Are we tracking good, not, everything's looking like it's on point for as far as?
For that particular project?
Yeah.
I'll get enough, so one of the things I'm going to ask of staff is even though we're not having it July 25th or whatever, the 25th meeting. I'll still, I'll still ask for staff reports, that'll be something you'll get an update on. I'll be honest, I'm not as up to date on that project right now. I know that we had a rocky start. The contractor was eager Beaver and went out there and started working, which you love to see that in a contractor, except that they, you know, we were supposed to have a pre-construction meeting, supposed to talk about communication and how we communicate in Castroville and what we say to people and how we warn them and all that. And none of that happened before they started working. And so that caused some issues for us that were, that we quickly resolved. So, but I don't have an updated, I believe it's going fairly well.
Okay.
Just from driving around, but you'll get a full report and the staff report later this month.
I just want to see how we're tracking with spending of the funds with, since we want to watch stuff and that. As far as, you know, we're watching our Ps and Qs now. So you'll also give us an update then on how we're doing on spending then, as far as this, the rest of this fiscal year, if we're on track.
Yeah, yeah, and so far, we're really good. I think you've gotten the quarterly reports and the monthly reports, et cetera. The only report you didn't get was last month's, but we've been on, we've, we've been in a good spot as far as our, our revenues and expenditures for the year. So, I mean, again, this is kind of what I was alluding to in the paragraph that I wrote was, fiscally, we are in a good position. We are very strong fiscally. The problem, the challenge is, the CIP that we've adopted was in anticipation of a lot of growth.
Right.
And, you know, we, we may just have to go back to not doing very many major projects, either in utilities or the general fund, for, until we can get to the point where, where it makes sense to do that. So, but, but from an operation standpoint, you guys have been very careful and prudent about adopting balanced budgets each year. And so as long as we continue that practice of balancing the budget every year, we'll be fine.
Okay, thank you.
I think the biggest takeaway from that is we are not a rich city, but we are a very well-run city. So thanks to your leadership and the leadership of the department heads, their care and attention to controlling costs, and at the same time, we're still doing a lot of capital improvements, the stuff that had been outstanding for quite some time. So I feel very confident in the place that we are. But the fact is, we're at a point of hyperinflation and things will continue to go up. It's a little bit scary. Anything else? You guys? I had a couple of things. So on the city hall remodel update.
Yeah.
Can you send out the floor plan that you had ended up with?
That's what I'm saying, this, I haven't, I want to nail that down with them before I send out to y'all, and it'll be a presentation to council.
Perfect.
So I don't have a floor, I don't have a floor plan.
Okay, that's, that's fine. As soon as we have that available, I'm not like dying to get this, we also need to make sure that we deal with, I've said this 100 times, I'm sorry to beat a dead horse, but we need to make sure that the exterior standards are followed and that we bring in somebody qualified to.
Yeah, so we're going to use, I think, Bryce, it wasn't Bryce Cox, it was another guy? The same gentleman that we reached out to when El Portalo was being redone?
That was Bryce.
Yeah, it is Bryce, yeah, okay. But not Bryce Cox, it was a different Bryce. Bryce Cox is my guy.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
It was.
Brantley High Tower.
Brantley.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, Brantley High Tower. So I've already communicated that to the contractor, we'll make sure and reach out to Brantley. And that, again, that may be something that comes up on Friday as well, but.
Okay.
Yep.
On the downtown master plan, I appreciate the fact that we only have so many resources to do that. I know that I've heard from a couple of the local business owners that really want to push us forward with that. And I think that it's prudent to wait on that, it's prudent to get the rest of the stuff. We have challenged you and the rest of staff with a lot of things. And so I appreciate the fact that you're telling us where we need to put the brakes on things and it's better to do a few things right than everything wrong. So that's really, that's positive.
The old adage is, do you want it fast? Do you want it cheap? Or do you want it really well-done?
Yeah.
And you can pick two.
Goods check.
All right.
And then the, the balanced scorecard, this is, I'm very happy with the progress, like you said. I'm not comfortable with the process, I don't enjoy it, but I think that, so Scott has been leaning into this really hard and working with your visuels on getting some things that, they're not the way that I had expected them, the way that I'm accustomed to them, but they have a method to this that I fully respect. And I think that the other side of that, we're going to come out with something really good. And the ultimate goal with this is to make sure that what council and the community believes are good is the same thing that city staff believes is good, and getting that alignment together so that we're all working off the same page of music, so. Great, all right. Next item, consider and take appropriate action on renewal of contract with EMC Services for professional consulting services. Scott?
Yeah, and for that, we have Janice and Ernie Gonzalez here to speak with you. I've also, they also prepared kind of just a cheat sheet of their accomplishments, and that is in front of you. You may recall, we began this relationship in 2021, right? Shortly after I got here. So I didn't, what's that? Yeah, 2020. Oh, that's right, yeah, because you guys were already doing stuff out at the airport for us. So I didn't have the pleasure of knowing, knowing either Ernie or Janice prior to coming here. What's that? Well, so they already, they were arguing some work at the airport, and then, yeah, we, I thought we started in 21, right? No, but when we started, we.
The former county.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 time flies. But, you know, one of the exciting things, and I think, I don't want to steal anything, but, you know, one of the exciting things is just to see the things that we have accomplished and what's still coming. So one of the big ones, we haven't been able to get official word, we've been asking and patiently waiting, is on our generator grant. That's a big, big issue that is a big part of our CIP. And if we're able to get that funded through this grant that they're, that they have sought on our behalf, that's going to alleviate a lot of dollars out of our CPA, CIP and allow them to be reprogrammed. So I'm very excited about that. That could be, I don't remember if you remember the amount, Janice, off the top of your head, but I want to say it's in the $2 million range. 1.6. Yeah, 1.6, okay. And then, of course, we've got the airport project that we met about just yesterday with a member of Tony Gonzalez's office. So that could be a very big project, on the low end, $8 million, on the high end, $24, $26 million. So these are pretty significant allocations that they've been able to get on our behalf. I'm going to turn it over to y'all.
So as Scott mentioned, on the generators, I just got word today from TIDAM, and they said they're having a lot of delays from FEMA. So as usual, it's always, you know, the federal government part that takes a little longer than the state. But he said it looks excellent, it looks like it's, it's going to pass. So we're just waiting for them to say, okay, go ahead and start with purchasing. And the good thing is that it was an 80, I'm sorry, 90/10.
What was that guy's name?
James.
James. I got to meet him.
Yes.
I don't know if you're aware of that, but we, they had a training at, at the county. It was kind of very short notice, but they invited the entire, like, a bunch of officials from, from a large area to go, kind of like this meeting down in Laredo. And so the chief and I and John all got to go out there and meet and introduce ourselves and.
Good.
Put in a good word and say thank you so much for these generators, even though he doesn't really have the decision-making power, it's always good to.
The good thing is that Jim was, I mean, he was, his nickname is Jim. So anyway, Jim, he worked for FEMA on mitigation. So he was extremely helpful throughout the whole process. Like, you know what? Change this words here and change this and change that, which was exceptional. And I think that's the reason I know that we'll be hearing something, I'm hoping by next month, I'm going to say by August, that we should hear something because FEMA does take a while to respond.
I'm going to say by October.
Okay, October. You say October. We should pick a bet.
We're going to take wages.
But as you can see on the chart, I don't, Ernie wants to come over here or not, we have all the rolls that we've done for these grants and then the amounts that we've actually gotten for the city of Castroville and then the pending side. So by the end, you'll see from the start, from 2020, we were working for the airport till now, you should be seeing almost a $30 million amount of grants that we've actually, potential grants that we've actually allocated for the city of Castroville.
When I misspoke, because I think I said 1.7 million during our video, Tony, but there was one.
Folks, I also, for the new council members' information, so EMC Strategy Group, as you all know, is a lobbying firm. We're a full-service lobbying firm at the state and federal level. We set ourselves apart because we support the economic development initiatives. And then we address the local priorities as directed by the city council and the city administrator. One of the ways we've been able to do that is we have regular communication with Scott and also with the mayor. And we've been able to develop legislative priorities at the state and federal level. And I'm really pleased to say that for the second year, the mayor and I and our delegation this year, Phil King joined us. We went up to Washington, DC. And we went up there prepared with our elevator speech. We met with members of Congress and their staffs that are relevant to this region. We also met with federal agencies that are relevant to the local priorities. And we sort of put in the priorities that are relevant to the city. We talked about small business support, veterans services. I'm sure that there's, I know that there's some veterans up on, behind the bench. And we met with the director of Veterans Affairs. We talked about how we can create awareness and education about the veteran services that support economic development, education, training certifications for veterans in this area. We also addressed some issues when it came to the Federal Aviation Administration and the United States Department of Transportation. We pitched the idea that we're pitching to the congressman about the Training and Certification Trade Program at the municipal airport. We've been able to also, at the state level, do the same thing, meet with members of the state legislature that are relevant to local priorities and things that are relevant to the city, and also with state agencies. I was, when I was hearing Scott's presentation about the issue with TechStop, I'm really pleased to report that we've developed a really strong relationship with the chief engineer for TechStop, Lance Simmons. And we've already been able to secure a transportation workshop for one of our other cities that we represent. And we've already planted the seed with Lance about having a transportation workshop here in either September or October. The idea is that he's already agreed to do it. Now we just have to nail down the date. Our homework is to make sure that we have our elevator speech prepared so that when he shows up, he's the boss of the whole, he's the main guy for the state. And so when he shows up, guess who else is going to show up? The district engineer is going to show up. And then the area engineer. So we, that's, those are the type of relationships that we've been able to develop to address the local priorities. As Janice mentioned, we've had some success when it comes to securing funding. And we talked about the projected, but let's, let's get down to the nitty-gritty. Okay? And I think that's important to address the funds that we've been able to secure and provide technical assistance and working as a team, by the way. While we take great pride in our ability to have access because we've been in the government services business for over 25 years, we can't do this without direction from the mayor, the city administrator, or support from the city staff, whether it's the finance director or the chief of police. So I'm really pleased to say that through the help of our congressman, working with the USDA, we were able to secure the funding for the airport hangar project, which was just under 1.2 million dollars. Part of that was a $200,000 grant beyond the loan. The other thing was the Community Project Funding Request, or earmark, that we secured through the help of our local congressman for the multi-use facility over at the Parks and Recreation Building. I'm really pleased that in the last few days, thanks through Debra's help and Devin's help, as we put out that RFQ, we've already gotten 10 responses from architectural and engineering firms that are interested in putting a bid in for those services. So that's progress. And that's a major opportunity for this community, you know, 1.7 million dollars as a community-funded project. We've been, we were able to secure that because we know the earmark process. Janice and I worked on the Hill. She worked for the Senate, I worked for the Congress, and we know how the game is played. The relationship also is really important, but knowing the process. Because every year, as Congress comes back in session, they change the rules. So it's our responsibility and our job to make sure that we are in tune with those rules and start planting the seed for the next year's funding request, which we already have. Then through the support of the chief of police, we've been able to help them secure the Operation Stone Garden grant at 20,000, the Ballistic Shield Grant in the wake of what happened in the mass shooting in Uvalde. The governor responded and he put out this funding opportunity for police departments that sought, that were smart enough to seek the funding. And we did. And we were able to secure just under $40,000 in ballistic shields that are going to be made available for your police department. And we're ordering that with the chief's help. And then we were highly recommended for the police vehicle that we're going to get, that was channeled through the ACOG. It comes through the office of the governor. The ACOG makes a determination and we were recommended to get the $55,000 grant to get a brand-new police vehicle. And then we assisted Leroy. Again, let me emphasize the teamwork. The Congress approved the American Rescue Plan funding, but only those cities that sought it were able to get the money and follow the process and then not get gigged on the process and having to return the money if you didn't use it appropriately. So Janice worked with Leroy to make sure that we follow the rules. And so we continue to look for state and federal funding opportunities and even private foundation funding opportunities that are relevant to the city. Of course, we always identify what that local match is because we want to make sure that that funding opportunity makes sense for the city and its operational cash flow. So that's, I also want to add that we've begun a series of workshops to support entrepreneurs within the city. We've got several slated between now and the end of next school year to include state and federal agencies that are going to provide direct assistance in support of entrepreneurship and existing businesses. And at the very onset, when the EDC was reorganized or reformed, we were responsible for supporting, again, teamwork, a small, a workshop to develop short and long-term goals. And I've asked to be put on the next EDC board meeting to develop an action plan to tie the resources that the mayor and Councilman King and I identified once we were in, when we were in DC, to tie those into economic development and how the EDC board can take a more active role and be more engaged in supporting economic development through the federal resources. So that is all that I have. Any questions?
I'll open it up. Questions?
So I do have a question. So in, in here, I think it says that it's a 50, or $5,500 a month fee for your services?
That's correct.
And the, the city pays a 5% administrative fee on any grant, other stuff, other stuff, earmark appropriations, funding requests. So is that essentially 5% of the money that you help us bring into the city, we turn over to you as payment for your services?
Right. And if it's, it depends on what that source of funding is. I think in our agreement, we put allowable. And so when it comes to the securing of the funds, whether it is a congressional earmark, which is disguised, different name now, is Community Project Funding Request or Grant, there are administrative roles that we have to do in order to make sure that the city stays in compliance with all the grant requirements. So yes, we do a, we have the monthly service fee that covers our service for the external affairs at the state and federal level, support for economic development, and then the continuous grant research at the state and federal level. And then once we secure funding, then we, we have in our contract a 5% inquiry, or 5% administrative fee. And I will say that we are well below the fair market rate. Most, most grant consultants charge 16% for their grant services when they secure the funding. We've been able to make, become more competitive because we've got the, the monthly service fee worked in.
Assuming that your reimbursable business expenses are less than your monthly fee, I calculated that you guys have about a six to 10 times return on investments.
Well done.
Thank you.
I just.
In addition to any intangible benefits.
Yeah. I think this, when, we talked about this when we met with you all originally and the mayor, we had a very candid conversation with the council about, you know, this being a trial phase to see how, how this, how this would go. And the intent was, you eat what you kill. So, you know, bring us opportunities and don't bring us opportunities. We could have gotten our own. Bring us new opportunities. And I think EMC has delivered on that. In fact, I feel very confident stating that we would not have gotten the community grant that we got for the building, for sure. That's 1.7 million dollars that we wouldn't have seen. And I think our likelihood of getting the generator grant, which I feel very confident we are going to get, we'll see how, seeing whether it's August or October, hell, next February, I don't know, when FEMA gets around to telling us. But I feel fairly confident we're going to get it because of your efforts. And had we not had the handholding and the relationship that you've built with Jim and that back and forth and asking those, et cetera, our odds of being able to get that just on our own would have fallen drastically. And that's true of most of these, even some of the smaller grants. It's just, you need someone that's going to go and make the right, talk to the right people and make the right calls and ask the right questions and then follow up. And, you know, there's a lot of, I wish it weren't the case, but the fact is, you know, Janice and Ernie will send multiple emails saying, hey, we need this. I need this by this day. And then, you know, two days later, I need this. I still need this by this day, to make sure that we were successful in applying for this grant. So I definitely feel like that they have added value to our team, that they're worth every penny of what, what their contract costs us.
You know, our success is a shared success. I mean, it's, it's really great when you have a mayor and other city council members that are responsive and share ideas. And that's important. It's, we've got to have a relationship. It's got to go both ways. And I think we've got a good synergy working between the mayor and city administrator and his team. So I'm just blessed to be able to service and, and work with the team here in Castroville. And as we identify success, successful opportunities, our firm has also experienced success. You know, we, now we've got our two sons working for us. Ernie Fabio is now our marketing communications director. And then Mitchell, who just came back from interning for the US Congress just last Friday, he's our grant writer and he's won every grant that he's written so far. So it's been, it's been a.
And it's more than one.
Pleasure. He's, he's written nine. Nine grants. Nine grants and he's won them all.
Councilman King, you had a question statement?
On the American Rescue Plan, Scott, would you have noted that or gone for that or?
We already had that. And that was something that, you know, I discussed. They were not paid a 5% commission on that.
No, no.
Their administrative.
We actually helped out with the recording.
So when we see administrator, that's where you're paid the 5% fee, which I personally think that's a, thank you for that fee. The second thing is the TechStop pedestrian bridge. Would you all help us go for that?
We provided technical assistance. So.
That was a technical assistant one also.
Right. And that was, again, teamwork. You know, all of the duties is assigned by the city administrator. He asked to support liquidity.
The letters of support, reaching out to the community, making sure that we got those items in a timely manner and got them back to where they belong was the big issue.
And I want to, and I'm glad you asked that question because Scott asked me prior to the submission of the grant. He said, all right, let's clarify this. You guys didn't write the grant, but you guys are supporting, what do you expect out of this? And I told him, we don't expect anything out of that because that's within our contract. We didn't write the grant. We supported it. So we make sure that when he asks a question, we clarified quickly.
Should have added that to your list though.
I missed that one.
I would say that the services you've provided, the amount of assistance in just helping us coordinate with our elected officials on getting some of these cooperative efforts going, I think it goes a long way. It helps us continue to establish that relationship more and more deeply with the people that represent us through this mechanism of asking them for money and becoming good friends with them in the, in the process. So it's, I think it's been a big benefit to us. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
So if there were be a motion, it would be to approve the contract renewal with EMC Strategies as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is their, this is their third city today. So.
Next item is consider and take appropriate action on applications submitted for open positions on city boards and commissions. Debra?
This one is a little bit shorter than the last one. These are the applicants that you saw the last meeting. I will say, one of the applicants, Linda Guerra, is a reappointment. She sent, she did come in and request to be considered for zoning board of adjustments. Also, I did reach out to the alternate on the Parks and Recreation, Ms. Habey. She said she wished to stay at that status at this time. She wants to stay as an alternate. And then Ms. Cortez, which was alternate number one for the library, said she would like to move up into the full board position. There are two full board positions open in the library. There is, there's, and of course, you have two applicants. And so, and then Ms. Hoag, Hoag, I believe, she's a new applicant and there is a full board position for the parks that's open.
Great. Well, since you're here, would you like to.
Okay.
Advocate for your, will you come up to the podium, please?
Good.
Just like to put you on the spot.
I might have more questions.
What is your talent?
I do have a question that would pertain to how I move forward or not. Just based on the CIP and, and how, what I heard when I first walked in was that it might slow down a little bit as far as spending goes and whatnot. The last parks meeting I went to, they were asked to prioritize the master plan and whatnot. There's a million ways to do that. And so one of my questions would be, realistically.
Well, can I pause you real quick? Because I think I know your head.
Sure.
I want to revisit this in terms of, because legally, we can't talk about anything that's not on the agenda. But back to Mrs. Martinez's question about the financing for the CIP. One of the things that, one of the instructions that I've given to Devin and that I've asked him to relay to the Parks Board is that moving forward, and this is just isn't, this is really important to EMC left, but this is really important for that, renewing that relationship with them. Any money that we spend going forward, because we still have very healthy fund balances in the general fund and the utility fund, any money that's spent going forward needs to be paired with a grant. And right now, the Texas Parks and Wildlife Grant is something that's being pursued that I know you're aware of. Y'all approved pursuing that. It's up to $750,000. It's a 50-50 match, which means they will match $750,000 if we put in $750,000. You have that amount of money to put towards projects. It will be coming on you. And so what we're doing is applying for a list of projects that totals seven, or $1.5 million, not anticipating we'll do all of them, but we need to give them something. So we give them that list. We ask the Parks Board to prioritize that list. And the Texas Parks and Wildlife will determine whether we're worthy or not of receiving it. If we receive it, you still, just like in every other grant, have the opportunity to use some, all, or none of it. So it'll be, you'll be able to allocate those funds just as if we were going through the CIP and evaluating the merit of each project. The benefit there obviously is you have the state stepping up and paying for fully half of whatever it is you choose to fund. So that's, that's the reason you might be hearing different information, or conflicting information, because on the one hand, we have, none of the projects are funded technically. They're not in the CIP. They're only exist in a master plan. And it's true, we probably aren't going to issue additional general fund debt for any time in the future. But it's also true that there's this grant opportunity and that there is the ability, whether or not there's the willingness yet, will determine, the council will determine, but there is the ability for the city to match those funds out of their fund balance. I don't know if that.
That, that helps. It'll probably generate more, but I'll go talk to Devin. To answer your question, why I was interested in the board, we're all in Castroville and it's going to keep growing. And so my stake in the ground or passion is to help those that come into our community grow roots here so that they're not just living here and going back to town. And our parks and what we offer as a community and how we live and grow together is important. And so that is my, my reasoning for saying yes to the, the ask. And now I ask to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So then, I did not write this down. Debra, you said, the recommendation again was starting with?
Starting with the airport. You have John, and I can't say his last name.
Clarener.
Thank you. Clarener.
Clarener.
He's a new applicant, which the last meeting, you had the board president's recommendations and he was one of them. There is a full board position, number five, that's open. There's an alternate position, but it's still.
And the airport advisory board said they want him in the open position, number five.
They met last night?
Yes.
Okay.
They had a special call meeting last night.
I meant to.
They didn't want to meet during.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay.
Then do I have a motion on appointing John Clarener to the open full board position?
So moved.
Great. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
The next one is the library board. Now, I think she's Dr. Cortez, but Lauren Cortez is the alternate position as we speak now. She did wish to be moved up. She'd like to have more, she'd like to be more involved with the library. So she is requesting to be moved to one of the full board positions. You have two of those, number three and number four. Then you have an alternate, number two. This board is right now, and also I did receive an email from Charles, I believe it's Hall. He has requested to, he's not going to resubmit. So that's why you have an extra, you have two full board positions open. The other lady, Isabella Cortez?
I do believe from the application, I believe they are kin. They happen to live in the same household, or it has the same address. I believe she wants to be able to work with the library also.
Okay. So you said that we have, and then Amanda?
Amanda is, last meeting, you had her resignation. She's off. She's off.
Okay. So then.
You should have an up-to-date board chart in this, in this, tonight for you to see which, who's on and who's off.
Can I make a motion?
Absolutely.
I'd like to make a motion for Lauren Cortez to appoint her to full board position number three on the library board. And at the same time, a nomination for Isabella Cortez to the full board position number four.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
And on the Parks and Recreation Board, you have one new applicant which just spoke, Ms. Hoag, and there's one full board position, number five. There'll still be an alternate position if someone is interested in coming on to that board. But as of right now, we have one full board position. And I believe that was a recommendation from the former chair, Mr. Connor.
Do I have a motion to appoint Kelly Hoag?
I knew we'd appoint Kelly Hoag to full position five.
Second.
Great. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, Kelly.
Now, the last one is Linda Guerra. And she has been on the board for a lengthy time. She has requested to be reappointed if y'all consider it this meeting. And she's in current position number five now.
I noticed on her application, she also said she had experience with city council. I don't remember.
She was on the city, yeah, she was on city council back in, I'd have to go back and look, but she used to be on council. Yes, on that board, I happen to have one, two, at least two members, former council members.
I, because I am the liaison to that board, I have had a bit of experience watching this process. And I was surprised Linda Guerra was elected by the board, I guess because of her tenure, to be chairman. But I was surprised that after so many years of being on that board and she had no command of the Robert Schulz order and how to conduct a meeting. So I was very upset to see that.
Well, when the board meets again, they will reelect officers.
Yes.
As each board, once we finish out, if they haven't already. But that board would be an officer. And I can't speak for her, but I do believe she probably would rather not be in, yes. Yes.
Okay, well, that would be, that would be suitable and helpful. The, the other issue I had was that there was quite a bit of discussion off-subject during a couple of the meetings that I attended, so.
And I'll echo that just from a staff perspective, something Brianna and I discussed. This is, it's been, it's been a minute. I mean, it's been several months since there was something that was before the PNC that I attended and witnessed. But the comments that Ms. Guerra made were, yeah. We had to, we had to state a couple of different times, were inappropriate. They're not relative. They're not relevant. And that would be my concern about reappointing her. If, from a staff perspective, I wouldn't recommend it personally. Not because I have a personal issue with her. She's, she's wonderful and her willingness to serve the city should be commended. I would be more concerned about whether or not this position's appropriate just because of the nature of what's being done and, and her responses to that in the past.
Do you have?
I'm not really nominating anybody else's. That's up to them.
Did you want to make a motion to?
I would move to deny reappointment myself.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Further discussion?
Nothing else to say.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, I just want you to know, because of the nature of that board, if we don't find someone else to, because there is an opening already, she will stay on this board until we, we can find someone.
Yeah, because that board has to be, has to be.
If she'll stay. If she doesn't, we won't have a forum possibly.
It didn't meet this last year, was it?
It's been almost a year because we don't, they only meet if there is a variance request, so.
I do know, related to Paul's comments, I think a lot, with several of these boards, I think some of them know Robert Schulz orders and some don't. And because I do attend different board meetings, not, I think HLC actually does that. I think some of the others. And that's, in the last meeting we discussed, maybe you or Scott opinion those and kind of, you know, guiding what the board to actually, their role they play and that they do need to follow Robert Schulz orders. And these are the, because they, yeah, they're all over the board, some of those. Not all. All of the boards, boards are all over the board.
And the boards are, to me, they are an extension of our reach. Imperative to have and making sure that we've got the right people that are on the boards that are not just willing, but qualified and, and do us additional benefit in serving the people. So I appreciate the amount of attention to this. I think that we can probably do that in August. I meant to do it. We've got a lot of stuff coming up with the upcoming trip, so.
Thanks, Scott.
Yeah, a little bit. So, yeah, I have no problem with committing to do that. Scott and I will work together and exactly what that looks like.
I think it'd be a good idea to reach out, see if we can find good candidates, people knowledgeable and invested to sit on especially the zoning board of adjustments.
The zoning board of adjustments is different because it is quasi-bore, I mean, you know, that's.
And it's unchallenged.
Quasi-judicial.
Yes. And, but that's what I wanted to say, just in case someone brings something to us, we have to always let them know if there's not a full board that's available. They have that option to, to wait. And if we can't, when I first came here, we couldn't ever get one for over three or four months. So if someone starts saying, why can't we have our, our variance looked at, that can be an issue.
Yeah, we'll have to get, we'll have to find someone quick.
The zoning board and zoning board of adjustments are state, are mandated by legislation.
Yes.
So are there actually two slots?
There's two openings now.
There's one opening and then Linda, she's not reporting.
We have two, well, we have two alternates and we also have her position open. And, and there's five members on the full board, so.
Think anybody send them in?
Well, they have to be well-qualified for that.
That's true.
And they have to live in the city.
They have to live inside city, that's correct. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next item is consider and take appropriate action on setting the date, time, and place for the public hearings on the proposed FY '24 tax rate. Scott, is this you?
Yeah, well, so we, it's really Debra in part because she took all the hard work of figuring out when the date needed to be. I know because I interrupted her and she was in the middle of that process. And I think I've told you this before, it's like making a brain do a backflip because you've got to go, okay, not before the 15th, but not less than whatever. And there's a whole, it's one of those algebraic word problems that you got in high school and middle school when you were studying that type of stuff. So the dates that have been proposed meet the state's guidelines. The, the plan is to deliver to Debra a proposed budget.
Well, this one's a little tax rate.
Okay, sorry.
That's a second one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So on, on the tax rate, it's a little bit easier, I think. And so the public hearing on the tax rate would be what?
August 8th and the 22nd is what we're suggesting, to be able to get it in to the paper from the legalities.
So the recommended motion would be?
To public hearings.
For the city council to call the public hearings for August 8th, 2023, and August 22nd, 2023, to be conducted during the regularly scheduled city council meetings at 5:30 PM in the city council chambers.
So moved.
Second.
Great. Any further discussion?
I have a question. May not need these.
Right.
Depending on what the county gives us in the letter.
I think you have to have at least one.
If we don't, if we don't exceed.
And you won't. So that's one of the things I was going to mention. I'm glad you asked a question.
You may have to cancel one, is the point I'm making. If the letter comes in and we know what the range is, then we can decide.
Well, and right now, our budget, the way our budget's been planned, we have $1.2 million in revenue from property taxes. And that is anticipating, I mean, that's in line with what we're seeing from, from the county. I don't expect that to change by very much. So I think we're going to be fine. Not only that, but your, your current budget, the way it's been proposed, and I don't plan on making any changes to the general fund budget. So that's the one I'm really focusing on because that's what the tax rate's tied to. The general fund budget, I don't think it's going to change at all from where it is. And right now, it's to the positive by a couple hundred thousand dollars. So you're, you're adopting a little bit more than a balanced budget, if you want to think about it that way. And that's because I left in the allocation from your fund balance for the economic development position, for, for that tourism position. Really and truly, basically you don't need that money because we're balanced without it. But I left it in as an appropriation. Gives you some flexibility throughout the year. The, yeah, so that's it on the tax rate. And on the INS, I spoke to this earlier, the intent will be to still try and adopt the 51, 51 cent total rate, keep that flat. And the excess portion will roll into INS. And we have more than enough debt to justify that rate without going out and borrowing more or anything else. We'll, we'll utilize a portion of that for the time being to cover the debt service for the utility funds. About $250,000.
You said 51 cents just now, is that, are we planning to go down from 52?
Is it 52 or 51?
52.
I missed.
5233.
Sorry. What?
5233.
5233. We want to keep the rate the same. What, 5233?
Well, and a lot of times we have, I think in the past, we've had a, a public hearing anyway just for people to be able to speak.
And then the reason behind keeping the rate flat is, is the idea that as we grow, that'll give the city a lever, be able to leverage that new growth to the benefit of the taxpayers here.
We raised our INS rate by 15 cents, so the total rate is going to go up.
No, no, no. The total rate, 5233.
Will stay the same.
Will stay the same.
So if you're saying that we're going to, we're basically going to lower the tax to compensate for the amount of.
You're going to have less.
Extra, extra borrowing costs.
No, what will happen is you will have less money coming to the general fund for operations and maintenance. So last year, if you may remember, I, I overbudgeted by about $200,000. And it's because I believe when we were trying to make the budget work, I forgot that, that we were, that we had changed the rate to benefit the INS. And so I was looking at wrong, I think I looked at wrong numbers. That's the only way I can come to that conclusion. But either way, I corrected for that in this budget to make sure I didn't do the same thing.
Are we going to have an opportunity as the council to meet and discuss the details of the budget again?
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So there'll be two presentations on the budget in August. So you're not going to adopt the budget, I think, until the first meeting in September. So you'll have two more presentations on the budget in August. They'll be fairly high level. You've got access to, I, I believe I put all my working documents in the, in Teams now. So you have access to the Excel files I was working from, the rate, the chart to graphs files I was working from. So you should have access to all of that. And if you have any questions, I would strongly encourage you to just come to my office because it's probably something that may take some time to go over, to make sure you're comfortable with. But we will have two, and to answer your question, yes, we'll have two additional presentations on the budget in August.
And these are about the public hearings to discuss this, to give people the opportunity to give us feedback. More questions?
Just one other question, or I guess it's one and a follow-up. Will there be, I know that we're going to publish newspaper ads, but would it be possible to get these noted, like noted in the city newsletter with the utility bills?
Well, it depends on when it comes out because it may have already.
Yeah, the one for August is already.
It's already out.
Is it out?
Yeah.
That's the only thing. Now, the September one, we could probably put, we could put it in August.
Yeah, that's a little bit late.
Yeah.
Because by the time they get it, it'll be late.
It'll be on the website.
I would encourage you to reach out to your constituents and let them know these meetings are happening.
Oh. The, our notification service for dividends, is it appropriate to put it on that?
No, because that's a.
The INS.
Yeah. No, that's for emergency. The thing is that, that this happens at the same time every single year. And so if we continue to educate people that this is the time of year that we're doing this, then it becomes something that people are just aware of. And I think that putting it into the paper and even if we put it out on, it goes on the website as well. And if we do that electronically, at least right now, that keeps people informed. And you know me, I'm all about making sure that people are informed and, and actually know what's going on and have the opportunity to, to speak back. But I think that there's a point where we start to go overboard and using an emergency notification for a standard, annually standard thing, I think would be inappropriate.
Well, I know some people will say that keeping the rate flat is essentially a rate increase because your values increased. But anecdotally, what I'm seeing, my values increased on my land. I don't see, I, I don't believe there's a huge increase, at least I'm not seeing it from the county, that there's a huge assessed increase in the market values because the market really hasn't changed. And I think you'll see some protestations on that simply because the market, and you, I mean, you all know the market is not, it's not been super competitive this last year. People have really struggled to sell some of their homes. So I think you'll see some pushback on that as well. So we are not, and that's not, that's not factored in the budget. We are not factoring for some type of windfall from, from property taxes. So I don't expect a lot of pushback, frankly, but.
Did you have any other?
No, that was it.
Okay. Councilman King, you got something?
I was going to make a motion.
Well, we already had a motion.
We need to vote.
Second. That's what I thought.
No further discussion?
We're just looking for.
No further discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
The next one is the one that I was trying to figure out the dates, but after looking at it, the very first one is not the official public hearing. So the official public hearing, the meeting in September is going to be postponed correctly.
Yeah, so we do that twice just to be safe.
Then are we still talking about the other one or the next one? Okay, let me announce this item then. So the next item is consider and take appropriate action on setting a public hearing on the proposed FY '24 annual operating budget. And you're saying that it is not what you have listed in here?
No, it is. At the time, on the budget, there's a timeline where it's, once the budget is presented to myself, it starts the timeline on when you want to adopt it. And we count backwards on that one. And it gets kind of fun sometimes. But originally, when I looked at this, the August 22nd is going to be not 20 days after it's been given to me. But the official day, we always do two, just for people to be able to come and, and speak, is the September 12th. I'll, I'll publish both of them and they'll both be on the website. But the 12th is the official one. And so it'll be the same day that we adopt it, if y'all.
So I believe that the motion would be to set the public hearing dates for the FY 2024 annual operating budget for August 22nd and September 12th, 2023, during the regularly scheduled city council meeting beginning at 5:30 PM.
Correct.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, which one's second?
She was louder. She was louder.
Got a motion by Councilman King and a second by Councilperson Martinez. Any further discussion on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
I'll mention on that last item, I think the issues that we're probably going to need to discuss quite a bit are going to be rates and rate setting for utilities. Rates and rate setting for utilities and then the fee scheduling. You heard in the last, that workshop we had just prior to the council meeting, I'll talk about a couple of changes to the fee schedule. There'll be some fee schedule changes that you may want to look at. I think that's where we're going to center a lot of our discussion. Most of the rest of the budget's kind of set. And then there'll probably be some kind of presentation on salaries in August. Hopefully I can get that back and get a report to you all about that.
Great. The next item is consider and take appropriate action on adopting a development and analysis policy based on our workshop earlier today. I think that we're not at the point where we can actually do that.
I have this on as a placeholder, just in case. Can I speak to something there real quick?
Please.
Almost not take too much time because we're so close. We can see the light in a minute.
Don't upset Mrs. Mers.
What's that?
Shit up.
This is kind of what we were talking about, when you, you were talking about the, um, land use and kind of how that 12,300 square feet might be used, you can kind of see especially in, in something like this, where they take a couple of different looks at, at the utilization of property, and they try to put it in the transect type format, or, or, so this is kind of what I was talking about, I can't remember the name of it, but there is a national planning organization that has this, uh, level of documentation that's, uh, what do you call that? Open source? Great community can access it, and constantly utilize it, and something Mike Cox talked about, Tom Anderson talked about, the lady who quit Tom Anderson, I don't remember her name, also spoke about, and of course, I brought this out and showed it to Matt's team when they left, so that they were aware, that one of you all knew about this, had seen it and heard about it, it's more than likely when they bring back their donations, it'll be in this format, it'll be along these lines, and, and this, because it provides a graphical representation, you know, picture, picture representation of what it would be coming to adopt, it's very, very helpful to develop, so.
Great, thank you. So I do expect that we'll be making some future progress, um, and again, the idea with dealing with these development agreement standards is, um, making very clear what the community wants from any development that does come, uh, making it very clear, especially with some of the, um, the legislative changes that have happened recently, making sure that we are very clear with the, uh, with the developers, and know exactly what to expect, so I commend you all for, it was a really good discussion, we had some, uh, we had some points of, um, uh, I would say disagreement, I think there were different perspectives on, um, some of the items, and I think that the way the council talked that through, brought up the concerns, and the way that we dealt with that, I'm, I'm absolutely proud of that, and I think that we accomplished something really good, I, I feel very comfortable with the way that we're moving forward, so thank you for your time and your effort, thank you for putting in the, the stops when we need to put up a stop and say, whoa, whoa, uh, and for pushing it forward, so.
I'll be happy when we have Paul's.
Yeah, me too.
So August 8th.
The process is painful, but, but it's good. All right. Next item.
August 8th, I'm lying in to host that afternoon.
No goodness, you're brave. Uh, next item is discussion on future agenda items, is there anything that I need to know about that has been placed on there that we?
And then, under this item, uh, Councilman Dyer brought this forward, and I suggested this might be the place to talk about it, with you and Phil both being absent, I think it'd be prudent to appoint, uh, someone to step in in the elected role, uh, to, to be represented for the city in your absence.
Oh, absolutely.
So, that should be a council decision.
Okay.
So it's not, I, I-
And you do that without being on the agenda?
Yeah, it's, it's, we are not having a meeting, this is under the-
It's just kind of a drivel, isn't it?
What's that?
Mayor Protemoyle steps in to handle the meeting.
Right.
Wouldn't we, wouldn't we like the chairman at that meeting if we have that meeting?
Yeah, if you all had a special call meeting.
The mayor can only call a meeting. I don't, I don't know, I don't know how, actually-
It's a day-to-day.
It's good.
I sign checks anyway.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of the law, law thing that, uh, says when, about calling special call meetings when the mayor is absent.
Oh, no.
Because, believe it or not, the mayor-
You'd have to have a forum, first of all.
Yeah, yeah.
One. We'd have to ask legal counsel on that, because-
But who do you want, who do you want conservative questions to go to in the mayor's absence, or do you want to delegate somebody?
Uh, is it a, well, I, can we talk about this during this item, or?
He's, he's, that'll do it, or, yeah, you know, I don't know, I would suggest now is better than the other time, unless you're not prepared to do it.
No, I have no problem with it, I just want to make-
Charlie's not here, I'll slap our hands.
Why don't we appoint Paul Carey as acting mayor pro tem in your and the pro tem's absence?
Well, we can't-
We can't move, but that would be what you would recommend?
Suggestion.
That's what I recommend.
Okay.
That's his version of not it.
Not it. He's like, it's got to be done, but not me. All right. Well, uh, do you have any issues with that?
Only if you guys don't come back.
That's me knocking on wood, yeah, thank you very much. Okay. Are you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
If need be, yeah.
Unformly.
Okay. Unformly, without a decision.
So it's acting representative.
Are y'all taking, is the council, uh, taking a gift there? I understood there was, that was being arranged for, right?
Uh, yeah, we had, you want to talk about that?
We're taking six gifts, one for each of the five cities that the mayor's going to visit with, and then one with the group that has built the Steinbach House and continues to support it, so that's six gifts, we're taking them a, uh, a flag that will fly over the Alamo on July 14th, which is-
Bastille Day.
Bastille Day.
End of my birthday.
And, uh, they will be inside a decorative, uh, case that we're buying from Monarch Trophies, and Darren has arranged to get the English translation of, uh, something that he had written up, um, talking about the, uh, what's going to translate into English.
Is it Texas? Is it what you're translating into?
Texas English, from Texas.
He wrote up something in English, and getting a translator to translate and put it on the thing.
Okay, I just want to make the count, because I don't know if y'all, y'all have heard about what's being done, but, yeah, this is being done on our behalf, as the city of Castroville, uh, it's not a city, the city is not funding the trip, uh, Phil and Darren are paying for it out of their own pockets, in case there's anybody listening that doesn't know that, um, but they will be there, kind of in their official roles representing the city, and so, uh, the city thought it was right and proper to bring some kind of representative gift, I didn't hear the last word on what that was, um, it's not a extraordinary amount of money that they're-
He told me he talked to you about it.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't hear the final, final word, so, but I thought it'd be important the council to know that that's what's happening, um, I think it's a great gesture, and I think it'll be, uh, something that, yeah, you all will represent as well, so we're very excited about your trip. You want to see pictures? I think that needs to be on the agenda, we need to see-
So as a part of the agenda item coming up, you will see a report when we come back on, uh, the five different mayors that we're, uh, that we're meeting up with, the reaffirmation with, um, with Eggyseim, uh, the new twinning with Whittlesime, uh, Whittlesime, uh, the,
You got a proper Whittlesime.
I know, Whittlesime.
You're doing good.
And then, uh, with the other mayors, uh, as we are meeting up, we've got a, a wine festival in Colmar, uh, with Mayor of Colmar, so it's, it's going to be a lot of fun, hopefully there's no civil unrest while we're there. Hopefully we bring-
I don't know if it's because of our trip, but there is an event opening over there called, and it's at a, an exhibit, um, and it's basically the immigration to Castroville, Texas.
Oh.
And it's in, uh, Eagles, Eagles, China? Uh, one of the cities, and, uh, and it's like on Thursday, and I don't know if it just so happens to be, but it's like, it's a permanent exhibit or something. But also, part of this is, is that, like, I think I mentioned here, next year for the Alstation Festival, we know one group of about 30 plus are coming over, and then there's another group of about maybe eight or 10, and then there's another group of about that, that, so there's-
Now, how many people are going over there? Do you know? Do y'all have a count?
About three dozen?
About that.
Yeah.
There's some already over there, I was told.
Yeah.
Wesley Hovadir, who's a dancer, he went over there about two weeks ago, has been tooling in England trying to find a girlfriend. Good for him.
That's the other way that I watch him.
And two of the mayors left, uh, last week, and then a, two, two or three groups are leaving this week, and I think that the Banes and us are leaving on Sunday, the 23rd, so.
All right. So you'll hear more about that as we come back? Oh, yes?
Um, just, just to put it on your calendar, the, uh, state, there's a national organization called the Surveyors Historical Society, is having their annual rendezvous in San Felipe, in just east of, uh, west of Houston, on, they're starting on the 14th of September, we'll go through the weekend, um, there will be speakers, national speakers and Texas speakers, and because it's about history, um, I was asked to make a presentation on the Castro colonies.
Oh, neat.
So, uh, I'll be talking about some, you know, French villages and other such things on the, on the 14th of September.
September 14th, and where is that again?
This will be in San Felipe, uh, which is this side, there's a San Felipe historical, state historical site, which is this side of Houston, uh, near Sealy.
Oh, gotcha.
Where the original 300 Austin colony came from.
Yeah, so this is, yeah, we'll, we'll have a presentation on the Austin Colony, on Texas land development, on immigration, on, um, the, you know, Texas is the only state that still has sovereign land, uh, so we're going to talk about the general land office and, uh, the disposition of land in Texas, and, uh, these will be surveyors and others from all over the country and possibly all over the world.
That is really neat.
They do this every year, and they always pick a different spot, the last time-
Can you send out an email with that information?
Sure, sure, absolutely, I'll send you the flyer.
That'd be great.
Great.
The, uh, the last time they were in Texas was 2003, they met in Texarkana for the, uh, um, that was the anniversary of the, uh, commission that staked the line, the ser, the state line between Texas and Arkansas. And they, they set, they set earthen mounds with a Bodark post, which is Bada Ark, which is, uh, of course, every, every mile on that boundary.
Oh, wow.
Some of those are still there.
That's, that's wild. I do have another announcement, like you mentioned that, and maybe think of it today, registration open for TML.